This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, it is 6:01. So we're going to have to do things a little bit differently. Because we don't have Megan Harvey, so we'll just kind of go with the flow. Megan is on a plane to a conference that she has to go to for her job. So she wishes she could be here, but she can't. She will be flying. All right, so we're going to call this meeting to order. It is June 13th, Tuesday, and it is 6:01. So you can't hear anything, Laura? Can everybody hear? Thumbs up if you can hear. So it's just Laura. You might want to get out and come back. She can't hear you.
Cindy, Cindy, do you want to record?
Yeah, I will. But I want to kind of wait because we haven't even...
Can Laura hear us now? She left.
Okay.
I'll probably try and get back in.
I am looking for where to start this recording. It's a little different.
Okay.
All right, last time I had managed recording on this, and I don't now. Nope. Okay, Laura, can you hear us now?
Yeah.
I am not able to record this right now. Does anybody, Mayor, do you see a way to do this?
How'd you do it?
It's a recording.
I just did it. I just started it.
I was like, I have no idea how I did that.
Where did you start it? You're going to have to show me later.
It's under the three dots that we can see.
I looked at the three dots. I didn't have it, but okay.
And we might have different permissions.
Okay, so we are going to roll call in. Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
Megan is not here. Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Sarah?
Sarah Hunter here.
Laura?
Laura Scott present.
And Cindy Krasinski present. Okay, so we're going to start with announcements. I just want to make three short, really short announcements to kind of clarify a few things before we go to correspondence. And the first is a reminder to the public that public speak is not mandatory. It is something that we do because we want to hear from the people in the community. So there are times that we have shorter public speaks and times when we have longer ones, depending on where we think the meeting will go. We cannot speak back, so sometimes it can be a little frustrating for us because we're going to hear things that we will not be able to address till the next week. And we do take notes. All of us are avid note takers. So when our heads are down, we are listening, we are writing down who is talking, and basically a summary of what they're saying. So we are not making our grocery list. The next thing I want to just talk about is at the last meeting, the union spoke about a problem that they didn't go to the superintendent about, they did not file a grievance for this problem, and they did not reach out to the school committee. Instead, we found out in the middle of public speak. I just want to remind everybody that going forward, there is a process when there are problems. The first is to go to the superintendent, and if it's a union matter, you then file a grievance. And then the third, if that, as that grievance gets filed and doesn't get resolved, it goes to the school committee. So I'm asking that in the future, we please follow proper procedure because otherwise, we can't, we can't speak to the issue. But we also, it's very frustrating when that's the first time we hear about it. And the last thing I want to remind people of is, because I know the city council has been weighing in on a number of things. The city council approves our budget, but I want everyone to understand, they actually don't, they're not allowed to micromanage our budget. They have no jurisdiction over the school committee. So people are welcome to talk to city council at any time. But if you want to work on an issue, you really have to talk to the superintendent and the school committee. Okay, so I just want to put those things out there so that going forward, we get into a habit now of hopefully communicating to the right people to get the right answers and the full information, if that's possible. All right, correspondence. Megan usually does this. I do know that we had a couple of people who weighed in after watching the tapes of the superintendent interviews. And today, just before this meeting, I noticed that we do have, we had some email, an email from the ELL, one of the ELL teachers. So that's the only correspondence that I have right now for us. We do not have a student representative update today. She is extremely busy with the end of the year. And so we don't have any information there. And the last part of my announcements are, last night, we did vote unanimously to to go into negotiations with Maureen Benenda. I was hoping that we would be finished today, but we are not going to be finished. And we will be scheduling another executive session to tie those loose ends up and reveal the contract. So we have someone in mind. We have someone that we want, but we do not have an agreed upon contract at this point. So now is the time for public speak. We're going to have 15 minutes. I'm going to ask that you state your name and keep your comments to three minutes. And we will open it now, and if you just let us know who would like to speak, we will call on you. We'll take a peek. There are two. Okay, Andy Goulet raised a hand. All right, are you able to unmute yourself? I think that, okay, there you go.
Hi, I'm Andy Goulet. I live at 32 Oliver Street in East Hampton. I'm also on the agenda as a part of the East Hampton Learning Foundation and Depict presentation. So you'll be hearing from me and my colleagues a little bit more. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate everyone on the school committee and everything that you've done for the town, and I appreciate your hard work and your deliberations. And I know it's not easy, but it is very appreciated. So I just wanted to say that, and that is the end of my comment.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Just going to try to check. I do not see any indication that anybody else wants to speak. The meeting is passed, so we're at 6:10. So hopefully, anybody who wanted to speak has joined already. I'm going to give it one minute, and then I will then close down public speak. All right, we're going to close public speak and go on with our meeting. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. LeClaire.
Thank you. We have a few presentations this evening. The first one, and probably the most important presentation, is the one that we have delayed a few times. So I begin this evening by apologizing to the ELF Foundation because we've put them off, and they're such an important part of the fabric of the East Hampton Public Schools, and they really deserve all the credit. And we're very grateful every year for their support, and we welcome their presentation every year that they give to the school committee. And so this evening, I'm going to welcome Jen Bruff, who heads the foundation. And Jen can introduce the folks that will be doing the Depict presentation tonight. So Jen, welcome and welcome everyone from the ELF Foundation.
Thank you, Dr. LeClaire. Thank you, everybody, for having us this evening. Like Dr. LeClaire said, I am the president of the East Hampton Learning Foundation. Last summer, we decided as a board that we needed to garner some more interest among teachers and professionals in the school department to see what else we could do for them, what we could provide for them. We were not seeing as much grant activity, and we understood that as educators, everybody was overtaxed, overstressed. And we wanted to give them an opportunity to spend the day to brainstorm and to really think about what they needed from us as a foundation and from the city, basically, to help them do the best job that they possibly could do. We were fortunate enough to have Depict volunteer their services. They did this for free for us and spent a day with our educators to help them, like I said, brainstorm. So what we're going to do is a presentation of the information they were able to garner that day. We have Andy Goulet and Scott Holsman of Depict, who will share some of the information on a higher level and what their purpose was and what their practice was. So Andy and Scott, please take it away.
Thanks, Jen. Could I have screen sharing permissions?
Did you do it? Dr. LeClaire, you're usually faster finding it than I am.
I'm not seeing where I can give screen sharing.
See now, it tells me I'm not allowed to share. How about the mayor?
Let's see.
There we go.
You got it?
Excellent.
Great. Well, thank you, Jen, and thank you, Dr. LeClaire, and thank you, Scott. My name's Andy Goulet, and Scott and I work with Depict, which is a local design and facilitation firm. And we sort of do this work with a lot of different groups, public planning, different nonprofits, academic organizations, working on things like better communication, strategic plans, visioning, that kind of thing. So really, the session, as Jen sort of indicated, was a, it's a good way to think about it if you think about it as brainstorming. But it was sort of a guided way for us to get educators in a room. We actually did two groups, and to get them talking, get them sharing their ideas, and also listening to each other's ideas and seeing where the overlap was and seeing where there would be different possibilities and challenges. So really, as you can see here, you know, it kind of lays out our beginning mission here. And the end goal of being a more productive and thorough partnership between the public schools and the Learning Foundation. You can see us here. These are the facilitators, Scott and I, our colleague Seda, who was not able to be here tonight, and our colleague Pasqualina Azarello, who actually did some live graphic facilitation, which you'll see some pictures of. Thank you. So our process in this project, as in a lot of projects, first followed rapid ideation. And what that basically means is generating ideas quickly, sort of not giving too much time to let your mind tell you what's possible and what's not possible, but get the ideas flowing, moving on to some individual reflection to dig into those ideas a little bit more, and then take those ideas into small group discussion to see where those overlaps are. And then finally, into a plenary discussion with everybody to really sort of see where similarities are, see who's sharing goals, seeing how these visions align, and how could they can be complementary. So the rapid ideation was an invitation to write down as many ideas as you can in three minutes. And we use our famous Post-it notes for this. And the way we did this is had everyone write down ideas on Post-its and put them on a wall. And there wasn't really any line between creating your own ideas and listening to others' ideas. So you could go up there and see what was happening. The next was individual reflection, where we took those ideas and we invited people using this template that you can see on the left here. There's one on the top and one on the bottom. And you can see those different sections in the template, encouraged people to think a little bit deeper about their goals. You know, what is exciting about this idea? What do you need to do it? And what's in the way? And throughout this whole process, it was always okay to say, I don't know, or I'm not sure. And then we moved into a small group discussion. So this allowed us to kind of share our ideas and work them out a little bit more and fill them out a little bit more while also seeing who else was thinking along the same lines. And by sharing that and getting ideas from other people, it allowed us to grow those individual ideas. And finally, into a plenary discussion facilitated by the wonderful Pasqualina that you can see here. So this was a place for everyone to come together and everyone to share their ideas and to really sort of solidify, as you can see here on this graphic that Pasqualina is creating live based on the discussion, to really pull out the highest points in the discussion and to see where there's the most agreement and where the commonalities are.
So this is kind of a zoomed in view of one of those synthesis visualizations. And we really believe that there's so much power in visualizing things in real time during conversations as a way to mark, for everyone who's involved in this generative convo, to mark that an idea has been shared and a way to see the whole picture simultaneously while discussing its many, many parts. It's powerful. It's helpful to be able to see your ideas interact with the ideas of your colleagues and your community. This process, which we call scribing, is a way to visualize a conversation in real time. It helps to make ideas a little bit stickier in our individual and collective memories and a way to make everybody feel seen in a conversation, adding that kind of sense element along with feeling heard. Looking at some of these, you'll see the sort of ways that ideas kind of bloom and sprout out of these conversations. You know, organizing them around sort of these creative expressive ideas, ways to possibly encourage some sort of enterprise with students, as well as conversations around what our common barriers are and how to work those into into kind of our full perspective view of these opportunities, which all come with their own challenges. You can see more of those around student clubs, collaborations with a community inside and outside of the school, and finding ways to support students and their families. In addition to the real time visualization of the conversation, we make sure to gather data at every stage of a brainstorm. And what you see here is a representation of thematic clusters organized around ideas, challenges, and needs. We do have a full PDF of this data, which, if you all have not already seen, we are very happy to share with you following this meeting. But really, using this process as a way to understand where ideas, challenges, and needs can overlap. Raising up some of those clusters, some of these headline blooms, we kind of identified these were the major energy areas that our teachers talked around and through and with each other, learning and developing in a safe way. And I'm wondering, Jen, if at this point, you might want to chime in and let us know what's happened on some of these areas since September.
So as a result of some of the ideas that came up through this day of brainstorming, I can share that the East Hampton Learning Foundation was able to fund several new grants that we probably haven't seen or would have seen without this event. For instance, emotional learning toolkits for grades K through eight. We were able to do a grant for $1,500 so that they had items in classrooms for children to use to keep them focused. We also provided funding for a sidewalk art chalk night. Not sure if anybody was able to participate in that, but that was bringing a local artist in to do sidewalk art. Another, you know, one of the items on there was some science education. And we, I know we've already presented to the school committee, Arcadia did, but that was a big grant, the largest grant we've ever provided as ELF of $25,000 for the East Hampton School System for science learning. We've actually decided we're going to do that grant again next year for that amount. So we'll be providing that science education through this grant for next school year also. Three D pens, a math lab. I mean, these were all ideas that came out of this day of brainstorming that turned into these great grants that were provided to us.
Okay, thanks, Jen. That sounds really cool.
Yeah, that's great.
I'll keep kind of the wrap up of this brief, but looking at the process and the way that it supports, the way that it supports collaborative brainstorming, very specifically focused on the many different ways that we all kind of think, learn, and process information in a quick way that sets a pattern of sharing, kind of egoless sharing with your colleagues, giving people a chance to reflect and develop those thoughts that have come out, a way to iterate them, test them against the ideas of your community members and to refine them with your community, and then using the insights that you've gained in small conversations to create kind of a collective, socialized understanding of these things. Here, I've got a bunch of kind of the academic language around the way we think about these things. But it's just that there are a lot of opportunities when you are able to be very intentional about designing collaborations and the process that you're going to use to make sense of the data that gets created from those things. And that pretty much wraps it up for us. I want to thank members of the committee for the invitation to be here and to work on some of this really exciting stuff with you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott and Andy. Really appreciate that. That was a great presentation. Thank you also to Jen for all the support. And I think the committee might have questions, so we'll just see if anyone has questions.
Go ahead, Jen.
Thank you. That's fantastic to see that. I was curious about how feasible it would be to have like annual grants versus like a one-off grant, or is it better to sort of use the grants to meet the needs of a given year? You know what I mean? Like the Arcadia, you know, the Arcadia grant every year seems like a fantastic thing, but maybe you do evaluate every year according to what the needs are? How does that work?
We do have a grant schedule, so every year, grants have to be applied for. Our funding is based on an endowment that we have with the community foundation. The funds we get every year are interest earned off of that endowment. So because the East Hampton Learning Foundation was laying dormant for several years, and we literally brought it back to life right before COVID, and then COVID hit and everything, just, you know, like everywhere. We're just starting back up on the fundraising track, for lack of a better term. Some of the things we have funded year after year that eventually were adopted by the school department as part of curriculum. So for instance, the garden, that was something that we funded for years that is now part of the curriculum. Our hopes that with working with the school department, we'll be able to get Arcadia into some sort of a curriculum-based learning where either grants are provided, not just from us, but from other sources. The ELF jazz band, we support every single year and a half. We the people, we support every year and we have. So the goal isn't necessarily, it'd be great if we could do that, but that takes a fundraising machine that we're just starting to learn how to build.
Got it. Thank you.
I do want to share really quickly, we are having a showcase on Friday night at the Blue Room from 6:00 to 8:00. We're calling it our ELF Summer Social, where there will be five different presentations from people who, teachers who had grants. They'll be showing what they did. Arcadia will be there. So we invite all members of the school committee and the public to come to see exactly where this money went to.
What day and time again?
It's Friday night, the 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the CitySpace Blue Room, right here in East Hampton. We'll have ice cream too, if that will encourage anybody to come.
Anybody else? Questions, comments?
I'm just going to really quickly plug ELF as some of their money. Our family would say is life-changing. That ELF jazz band has entirely changed the trajectory of one of our kids' lives. An incredible program. I don't know what we'd do without it. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, but I do say thank you for all your contributions. And I hope that you can keep them going, and I hope we can keep them going.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I hope you have a very nice meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have the next presentation, and I haven't presented on Google Meet yet. So hopefully, I can do it. Let's see. And I am embarrassed to say that, you know, I'm following up on, that was a really dynamic slideshow, and it's really hard to top that. Can you see my screen right now?
Yes.
All right, so I'm sad that Megan is not here because Megan likes to see the class size information every year, and she's such an advocate for it. But the committee did ask me to share some information about classroom enrollment at Mountain View. So I want to give a few reminders to the committee and to the general public. So in this new school, the classroom sizes are maybe different from some other area communities. We are following the state guidelines, and the school was developed with classroom capacities of 26 students per class. We did not have really a stay in that in the design phase of the building. We had to follow the Massachusetts Building Authority specifications for classrooms. I mention this because it dictates, to some degree, the number of actual classroom spaces we have. So it's a relatively large building, but we are dictated to certain numbers of classrooms in each wing. So that's a factor that I want everyone to remember. And what it's pushing up against as a reminder is this committee has made a very conscious effort in the last few years to keep class sizes small, particularly at the youngest grades, because we know through research that developmentally, smaller class sizes are more beneficial up to third grade. So that has been our thought process as we have developed our budget, as the administrative team has put forward a budget. So I wanted to share with you the information that we have at this point in time or at the point in time in which we developed the budget. Of course, we could get an influx of students in the summer at a particular grade or at a particular level of the school building that would dictate some adjustments on our part. But this is where we are now in the development of our budget. So for pre-K and kindergarten, that's their, they share the same So for pre-K and kindergarten, that's their, they share the same wing of the school. Their wing is special because they have bathrooms in their classrooms. Their classrooms are slightly larger than the other wings and they have very small sinks and that sort of thing. So our preschool K wing is the first wing on the elementary side. We have three actual classrooms for preschool and we have three actual classes of students at preschool. Next year it will be the same. So we have three spaces and all three of those spaces are filled with students. And our preschool model is such that we have students with disabilities and peers in the classroom and the classroom numbers are small because we have a lot of adults to support the students in those classrooms. In kindergarten, we have six actual physical classrooms, classroom spaces. And this year we had five classes of students. We had about 20 students per class. There's a teacher and a para educator in each class. And next year, our numbers actually at this time are smaller than last year at this time. We have about 73, 75 students as of this week, registered for kindergarten. We're estimating five classes for the fall with 17 students per class. Also in that wing, we have, because we have that one kindergarten classroom that we have not used for kindergarten, because we only have five classrooms of students right now, we have our occupational therapist and our physical therapist staff sharing a classroom where they pull students out for services. So that is a flexible classroom space. And additionally, in that hallway, we have a special ed classroom. And I mention this because our special ed classrooms are designed a little bit differently. They're substantially separate classrooms. They have their own bathrooms with changing areas and they have, we also have an additional space in there called a reset space for students that need the calming area. So our special ed classrooms are designed a little bit differently than a regular education classroom. Any questions on pre-K and K? Just please stop me anytime along the way.
Laura has a question.
Okay.
Laura, for some reason we can't hear you. No.
Well, if Laura, if she wants to go back to it after, I'm happy to go back to the slide. Yeah, I can, you know, if Laura wants to go back in and ask me it after, that's fine. So in grade one, we have five actual physical spaces, five classroom spaces, and we have five classes of children in first grade. Right now we have, this year currently, we have 21 students per class. Next year, we're actually going to have six grade one classrooms. One will be located in that kindergarten wing in the sixth kindergarten classroom. That will average about 17 students per class. And the reason for that is we had met with administration and the current kindergarten class has a lot of social emotional challenges. They're, they're COVID children, they're COVID babies. And so they really need smaller class sizes to get the additional support that they need, particularly around social emotional issues. So we've chosen to add a first grade classroom and it will be located in the kindergarten wing. Also in grade one, there is one special education classroom for a special education program. Remember, we don't necessarily have a special education classroom in each wing. And for those of you that don't know, a special education classroom can be a class that is set aside for a grade span. Like we may have a classroom for students with autism that is, has children from grades K through two. And it might be located in a first grade hallway, but it covers a span of grades. In grade two, we have six physical classrooms and we have six actual classes of second grade this year with about 19 students per class. Next year, we're only going to need five second grade classrooms with an average of 20 students per class, because our first grade students going up to second grade are a smaller group of students. And so OT and PT will move from kindergarten to the empty classroom in second grade. Also in the second grade wing, we have one special education classroom and one elementary music classroom. So these are all the first floor wings of the elementary school for our littlest ones so they don't have to do as many stairs. In third grade, we have six physical classroom spaces with six actual classes of third grade students currently, 20 students per class. And next year we will have the same, six classrooms of third graders next year and it'll be 19.8 students per class. Also in the third grade wing, we have art and we have the library are located in that wing. In fourth grade, we have five actual classroom spaces and we have six classes of fourth graders. One of those classes is in the fifth grade wing and that gives us 19.5 students per class. Next year, the third graders that are coming into fourth grade, we will have six sections as well with 19.6 students per class. And again, one of the fourth grade classrooms will be located in the fifth grade wing that overflow. And then in fifth grade, we have six.
Can you just go back from what I missed writing down grade four?
Yep.
How many kids?
We have, we have six classrooms with, next year 19.6 students per class.
Thank you.
Yep. And one of those classrooms will be located in the fifth grade hallway.
Thank you.
So fifth grade actually has six classroom spaces and they actually only are using five of them for fifth grade this year, plus the extra classroom, the sixth classroom is being used by fourth graders. In fifth grade, we do bump up our numbers a little bit. We have 23 students per class. Next year, the fourth grade that's going to move up to the fifth grade, it will be the same exact status quo. Five classrooms, 23 students per class. And in this wing, we have a special education classroom. I do want to point out that for anyone that thinks 23 is starting to get up there, we, we entertained that idea because this is not one of our early elementary grades. And I will say from a data standpoint, our MCAS scores are very high this year in grade five. And we also looked at other data points to see if our students were challenged academically from being in a classroom with 23 students. We did not find any evidence of that. Our students in fifth grade this year, for, you know, variety of factors, we have good teachers at that grade level, the, the students are spread out evenly throughout the classrooms. Students have been very successful in their classrooms with 23. And so to summarize, next year we'll have the following. Classes in grades pre-K, K, three, four, and five will remain the same number of actual classroom spaces needed. There'll be one additional classroom in grade one and there'll be one less in grade two. So staff, a staff person will just shift from one grade to another. Class sizes are relatively the same next year as they are in this current year. And special education classroom programs will remain the same. So I'm going to stop my share just so I can see everyone again in case anyone wants to ask me questions directly and I'm happy to share it again if you need me to refer back to something.
Um, I just have a, oh, sorry, I just jumped in. I apologize.
That's okay.
Um, I just have a question. At the very beginning, you were saying that there's a capacity for 26 students per classroom in the new building and that was the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Does that take into account the number of the adults that are also in the room or is, or do they only look at students?
No, it's adults as well.
Okay, so it's 26 students or is it 20, is there like a different number of adults or is it just 26 people?
It's 26 is the capacity for the classrooms.
Cool, thank you.
Yes.
Any questions?
Laura, just as an option, if you wanted to write it in the chat, then one of us could read the question for you possibly. If you're interested, sorry for having a mic issues tonight.
I will send this out to the committee members and if you have, Laura, if you want to just email me if you have a question.
Yeah, I just want to put out there, thank you very much for going through this sort of review of class sizes. It is really important. We have had conversations a number of times. It does impact our budget and we really do support keeping these class sizes not inching up. I mean, you know, just, just to say financially, right? Financially, if we wanted, we could open up every single one of these grades to add more students through choicing in and earn more money for our school district. But because we really value keeping the class sizes at a smaller level so that it maximizes the education of these students who again have unfortunately had to go through some of their education, some portion of it involving COVID at the most critical years, we are choosing very intentionally to not do that. And so I just want the public to understand that we are making some very conscious choices, intentional choices to focus on our students' needs and to focus on their education as opposed to just purely making a financial decision in this basis. Because this, this could be more money for us, but we don't want to go that route. We want to support our students' education and keep those class sizes small. So thank you very much, Dr. Leclerc, for going through this review and maintaining the class sizes that are strong and supportive for our students in East Hampton.
Thank you. And I, if I could just piggyback on that, you made me think about one other mentioning that I wanted to have this evening was in our older schools that we said goodbye to this past year, some of our special programs were in parts, you know, art, music, that sort of thing. And, you know, it was not ideal for those special subject teachers. And in the new school, we have art, we have a classroom, music, we have a classroom. So we're very fortunate and I know that one thought some people might have is, well, you could use those spaces for additional classrooms. To Maren's point, either make class sizes smaller or as a revenue source. And we could, but as a school district, we are being very conscientious about the arts and the arts are really, you can see from the last presentation we have, we had by Depict, how important the arts are for our community. And it's something that also came out in our strategic plan. So we want to place value on the arts programs, art, music, our physical education spaces, and we want to hold those spaces to high value. And we don't want to give them up after being in a new building for only one year. They're important to us. So it's really important that we keep all of this at the forefront of any discussions we have about classrooms.
Sarah? I did it right that time. I waited to be acknowledged by the chair. I have two, I have two questions. One is, so after fifth grade, and I, I don't have a middle schooler yet, so I'm, this sort of starts to seem like a fussy world to me. They start like switching classes, right? Like we start thinking about class sizes differently. But generally in middle school, I mean, for a sixth grader, like how many kids do they generally have in one of their academic classes during those class periods?
They generally have about 23 students in a class on the, on the middle school side.
So this fifth grade class size, which I think is where the concerns were, is, is roughly the same size class that they're going to have when they go to sixth grade, but they aren't switching classes and having multiple teachers. They still have one teacher, a homeroom teacher, their teacher for the whole day.
Yeah. In fifth grade, there are five teachers. One fifth grade classroom is a standalone classroom, self-contained. The other four classrooms are twos and twos. So they, the students do get, they do switch with like the teacher next door for like one subject or two subjects a day, just to start getting them used to though. So, you know.
Yeah, that's a big transition.
Yeah, yeah. And then when they go to middle school, on the middle school side, it's, it's a little bit more organized and, and it's a little bit stronger of a, they call teaming.
Okay.
But they do have it in fifth grade.
The other question I had was just about the special education classrooms. And I'm sorry I missed whether or not there were, are there special education classrooms in the third and fourth grade wing, did you, or the third and fourth grade halls, did you say?
There is not one in the third grade hall and.
I was taking notes and distracted by something.
I think there is one in the fourth grade hall, but I can't, I don't know off the top of my head. Let me just look at my presentation real quick. No, there's not one in the fourth grade hall either.
And so I guess my question about those classes is, you know, and for the community who might be less familiar with special education, every student has, every student who has an IEP has a placement that's indicated in the IEP. Some students are full inclusion, meaning that they are never pulled out of class or they're only pulled out of class for speech once a week or something very minor. Other students have a placement of partial inclusion where they spend some significant time of, it's between 60 and 80% of their day in their, or 40, 80%, something like that, in their regular classroom and then the rest of the time in the self-contained classroom. And then there are students who are self-contained, that's their placement is in a self-contained classroom and they spend most or all of their time in that classroom. And I guess I was just wondering when we're, when we are considering the sizes of these classes, how much are we working in the placements of the students? So you might have a class that has 19 students in it, but you have two kids who are doing partial inclusion. They have a para who's with them when they come in and now there's three more people in the room. I was just wondering how, how you add that to this already very complex formula of classrooms?
It's, it's true. And the one correction I would make is that every child is assigned to a regular education classroom, whether they have an IEP or not. They're owned by a regular education teacher, even though they may spend very, a very small amount of time during their day, but they're part of those overall numbers that I'm discussing with you. So in a class of 23 students, maybe there's only 21 students in there for the majority of the day. But there are students that are leaving the classroom for OT or speech or for reading support or for their IEP or for EL services. So there are students that are in and out of that classroom all day long.
Okay. And so I guess, I guess one thing just to keep for, for other family members to keep in mind and so that the community knows, for people who don't know me, you know, I have, I have a seven-year-old who is a special education student who's in. you know, I have a, I have a seven-year-old who is a special education student, um, who's in inclusion, and he is, you know, which, and he does get some support from um, a special education classroom. And I guess to just consider like when we're, when we have these class numbers, to remember that some, some of those kids, kids from every single class are going to be going in and out of these special education classrooms, which means at times there's going to be fewer people in your child's classroom. But also, at other times, there's going to be more adults too. So sometimes, you know, somebody comes over from whatever the attached program is, they're going to bring another para with them, or two students are going to come over with another para, or they're going to come over with the OT. So it's not necessarily, I mean, I think a lot of us, especially those of us who grew up um, and now have kids. It was like long ago that we were last uh, elementary school students, and that model was not as uh, as big of a part of the, of the school culture as it is now. And so I think that's something that's a little bit different from our experience and our kids' experience. And it's good to just keep that in mind when we're talking about numbers, which can feel very like definite, you know, like there's this many kids. This is a full class, you know, it's a little bit different now than it has been historically.
Yes, so true. I appreciate you saying that.
Um, Laura, I, when I peeked at the list, it was showing that you're able to talk. Do you want to try your question and see if you are able to get any volume?
Laura, just make sure your volume's turned all the way up.
We finally figured out how to get Laura to.
She did.
Oh, sorry. Um, so, um, Dr. Leclerc, thank you for your point about our special ed kids coming in and out, and that those numbers also include that. And Sarah, thank you for some of the explanations for special ed. Um, because it's hard to understand just how complicated this is, and um, that those numbers are not growing when those students come back, and they're part of that collective number. And then to Maren's point, um, I, I agree, and I am grateful that he talked about how um, we made a real commitment to keep our lower grades, um, small classes as small as possible. Um, because that is when early literacy um, happens. And so you've managed to do that, and I think, um, I think these numbers make sense, and I thank you. I thank you for the presentation. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Nope. All right.
Okay, and the next presentation is Julianne Levin, our curriculum director, who um, we uh, we're going to have her discuss the access scores, which are the scores for um, progress that our EL students make. Uh, they take the access um, assessment every year, and so we monitor their scores. We have discussed, as we've said, I think Cindy mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, EL students have been a topic of some concern in the community and um, in the elected boards. And so the request came from the school committee, oh, I think over a month ago, a month and a half ago maybe, to share out the access scores once we had them. We didn't get them until um, May. Um, and we've had other things on our agenda, so Julianne is bringing that information to you this evening. But to start off, um, Julianne and I have been speaking quite a bit about some of the confusion and um, consternation around the EL program, and some of um, the shifts that we'll be making for next year. And I think that some messaging has gone out that may not accurately reflect our program. So um, Julianne and I have a statement that we wanted to read this evening. I'm going to let Julianne read it. And then she will flow into the access score. So it all has to do with the EL um, student body. And so Julianne, welcome. And I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Leclerc. Uh, yes, so the access scores are all a part of the program that we are uh, working to improve every day in East Hampton Public Schools. And I wanted to give you some background and some more information about um, the conversations that have been had about um, students who are taking access and um, the assumptions that have been made in the community. So I wanted to write this statement, and Dr. Leclerc helped me on it, and, and now I'm going to go ahead and dive in. Uh, first off, we do apologize for the delay in reporting this assessment data to you. We have had it um, for a while. And uh, I was sick, and I couldn't come to the last meeting. I apologize. Okay. Um, a lot has happened since your last meeting. Of note, some members of the city council challenged the fiscal year twenty-four school budget due to information they received from community members about our English learners department. The group of community members approached city council with information, and the counselors used the information to call into question the budget recommendation from the school department. Specifically, they advocated for the school department to work within the existing budget and reallocate spending to support COVID-level staffing in the English learners department. What is troubling is that while the city council was considering voting down the school budget, no one reached out to the school and district leadership teams to ask questions about the information shared with the city council. This failure to fact-check, gather more information, and collaborate with additional stakeholders on this issue before making public statements about programming in the schools is disappointing. Moreover, the way in which our English learner population has been depicted in public meetings is problematic. In two recent meetings, public officials spoke about the English learner families in East Hampton. The comments were broadly generalized, and some comments reinforced a deficit mindset about multilingual learners and their families. Zaretta Hammond, author of Culturally Responsive Thinking and the Brain, a book we've been using as an anchor text in the district since twenty nineteen, informs educators about consciously holding lower expectations out of pity because of poverty or oppression, page ninety-nine. Hammond also gives us a description of the warm-demander educator, and those are the people who work in East Hampton schools, serving all students, including and especially East Hampton's emerging multilingual students. And those families contribute greatly to our schools. They are invested in the success of their students and the community, and they are active and engaged parents in their students' learning. We all know this to be true, and we need to be better at checking our assumptions about this important community. Every educator in East Hampton strives to be better every day in serving diverse families who speak many languages and providing everyone a welcoming and supportive community. To further illustrate how this process has unfolded, the data presented to city council was reviewed by school and district leaders only after a public records request. No one shared the information with district leaders to ensure the information was accurate. A better path prior to public statements may have been to gather data from many sources, collaborate with diverse stakeholders, and make meaning from the data by coming to consensus as a team. Of the many processes which have been broken in the last few years regarding the budget, the process of building relationships to promote understanding each, of each other's perspectives is the most broken. It's hard to understand how any student will be best served by degraded and distressful relationships among adults. The first line of the vision for EL education in Massachusetts is English learners in Massachusetts attend schools in which all educators share responsibility for their success, engage effectively with their families, and nurture, value and nurture their linguistic and cultural assets. School and district leaders support an expansive view of what a robust English learner program could look like. For example, English learner students should have access to bilingual counselors and special education teachers. General education teachers should have access to important professional learning and instructional coaching. Multilingual students and their monolingual peers could attend a Spanish language and culture special that we develop at the elementary and or middle school levels. This is a recommendation by the recently concluded Dual Language Program Feasibility Committee. By disrupting the process and failing to bring in a collaborative team, all creativity and visioning of a robust program was missed when public officials began dictating what staff they have determined to be sufficient for the EL program. It was a short-sighted and politically driven process that has landed us where we are today. I, I can't see you all when I'm reading, so, okay, you're all still there. That's good news. I'll make you going.
We haven't left.
Thank you.
We are here and we support you.
Thank you. Due to the public records request, the school department can confirm that information sent to city counselors was based on the submission of the district's English language education tiered focus monitoring process in twenty nineteen, data that is now four years old. Every six years, the district is automatically monitored by the Department of Education's English Language Education Team. In standard monitoring, the district submits a self-assessment. Interviews and observations are then conducted onsite, and the district is given a list of findings. Those findings are feedback on how we are doing to meet the learning goals of our English learner students. The district then must provide evidence to show how it is making progress toward a fully compliant program. The self-assessment for the program was submitted on May thirty-first, twenty nineteen. So the data and information reflected the twenty eighteen-nineteen school year. In eight, in the eighteen-nineteen school year, we had two EL teachers, no paraeducators in the program, and we served thirty-six students, including students in their first year of living in the US. The K to four English learner teacher mostly traveled between two buildings while monitoring students at a third building, while the grades five to twelve EL teacher split time between Whitebrook and East Hampton High School. This could be considered an insufficient model of EL education. Yet it was not the subject of any findings in the tiered monitoring report. In November two thousand nineteen, we committed, or I'm sorry, we communicated with the English, I'm sorry, English Language Education Department at DUCY and scheduled an orientation for our onsite visit. The orientation took place on March second, twenty twenty. So timeframe sound familiar? Uh, two weeks later, our jobs and our lives fundamentally changed. As soon as the government released COVID relief funding, the first thing we did was add staffing to the EL program. Two full-time educators, one more full-time ESL licensed teacher for a total of three, and the temporary reassignment of a paraeducator at the high school. We made those changes before applying funding to any other program because we knew how the pandemic would disproportionately affect students in the EL program. You may remember the hours of discussion that went into bringing back special populations to EHS in the fall of twenty twenty. It was during that time that the onsite portion of the tiered monitoring took place, but it wasn't onsite. It was conducted by Zoom, and so many pieces that the monitoring was designed to look for in an in-person review were simply not possible to share. The review concluded in November twenty twenty. Over the next two and a half years, the district met every criteria of our English Language Education Corrective Action Plan, the plan we wrote in collaboration with the ELE team at DUCY and consultants at the Collaborative for Educational Services in Northampton to meet the findings of our tiered monitoring report. Notably, the corrective action plan using data from twenty eighteen-nineteen did not recommend an increase in staffing to the department. As the corrective action plan is a public document, it is surprising the city council members did not fact-check the information they were given. Rest assured, the corrective action plan will have no further findings as of the end of this month because we have provided evidence to meet all criteria and are fully compliant as a sheltered English immersion program. This includes that all general education teachers with English learner students in their classes have licensure endorsements and sheltered English immersion with the requirement to renew their license with fifteen additional hours of SEI coursework every five years. Maintaining COVID-level staffing in the EL, EL department was not a part of the corrective action plan, which again, did not recommend an increase in staffing from the two FTE, full-time equivalent, for thirty-six students model that was reported in the tiered monitoring process. With two-point-five FTEs and thirty-eight students for next year, and three FTEs the following year, the caseloads of English learner educators in East Hampton are lower than most districts in the state. We are able to balance the guidance from the state for direct ESL instruction with the evidence-based practice of inclusion, the SEI model, in the general education classroom. A more robust EL program does not necessarily mean more staff for ESL instruction, and research shows there's a fine line between direct services and unnecessary segregation of students. There could be an assertion that ESL instruction out of the classroom should be happening more often, but time out of the classroom means students do not have as many valuable interactions with English-speaking peers. Those peers don't get the benefit of interacting with multilingual learners, and it also diminishes access to other content area learning, including social-emotional learning, delivered by a licensed educator in that content area, which are both key components of the SEI model program. Another point that feels lost in this public discussion is the role of the paraeducators. Paraeducators are an integral part of our schools, and we rely on them for enhancing the learning of our students. However, our licensed educators are responsible for the students on their caseloads. When Dr. Leclerc first presented to the school committee about the EL department staffing, school committee members were dividing the number of students by the full number of FTEs in the department. This is inaccurate. Only ESL licensed educators should be included in the caseload numbers. In our special education department, we moved away from the use of academic support educator, uh, paraeducators in order to have more funding for licensed special education teachers. Due to this, next school year, we will have a special education teacher for each grade level at Mountain View with an average caseload of twenty students with disabilities each. But they will not have paraeducators. In planning for the EL department, we made a commitment post-pandemic not to have an EL teacher travel between buildings anymore, whilst instructional time due to travel is not acceptable for the program. So in our careful financial planning of taxpayer dollars, we opted to keep the three FTEs as licensed ESL teachers and reassign the paraeducators to other programs. Another misinterpretation was regarding how much the EL paraeducators were able to support EL students this year. East Hampton has been plagued, like many other districts, all year with staffing shortages and absences, and we have had to reassign at least one of the EL paraeducators on average four days per week to substitute for other staff members. One more. There's one more assumption to debunk this evening. First of all, not all English learners are part of the BIPOC community. And most of the BIPOC community in East Hampton is not an English learner student or family member. If the intention is to shine a light on supporting our BIPOC community, we would all love to be part of that brainstorming with the city council, with the school committee, with our school and district leadership teams, with our teachers, with our families. On the other hand, if the intention of the city council, the school committee, et cetera, is to increase support for the English learner department, then let's brainstorm that. Another city council member last week said, "We shouldn't be happy with good enough services." Yes, that should be true across the board for our city schools. However, we have been trained to have a good enough mindset when it comes to our school budget. The idea that we will be going back to city council for an appropriation every year to meet our level service needs does not communicate that we should be proposing an operating budget that provides above and beyond programming. It communicates a sentiment that we can provide level services in the district and go back to city council when our out-of-district special education tuition or transportation exceeds our predictions. If the city is sitting on a pot of money to create more robust programming in our schools, please, let's engage in a transparent process, a transparent process about how to use that money. I'll conclude this statement by quoting one of the consultants we worked with when developing and meeting the criteria for our corrective action plan, Dr. Albert Johnson Musad. People are not just one thing, and our practices and protocols in education often address them that way. We do certain things for students with disabilities and other things for ELLs. But what of the student who is both, and black or brown also? There are ways for districts and schools to work on expanding our perspectives and practices in order to fully see and serve the whole student. With that in mind, let me show you the data from access and how it informs the caseload assignments for next school year. Uh, these caseload numbers for next year have also been confirmed by the EL department teachers. And now I have to share my screen. Um, Sarah and Laura, you don't know this about me, but I am not great at sharing my screen. The rest of the school committee is very used to this. Oh, it, it says I'm not allowed to.
I think that's the mayor. The mayor, the mayor has the magic touch on that one.
Well, I'll take this opportunity to welcome Sarah and Laura. Sarah, I, we go way back from uh, the beginning when I first, uh, joined East Hampton, and Laura, it is great to see you. I'm so excited for you all to be a part of school committee. I'm just gonna keep, I'm gonna keep, uh, you know, vamping here.
It says you can share.
It says I can't. Okay, let me try that. Now try that. Oh, yep, yes, that worked. Okay. No, no, that was perfect. Thank you. Oops, let's go back to the beginning now. Okay. All right, you can see that all?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so ACCESS data, we took ACCESS, uh, or we administered ACCESS in January, um, in February this year, 2023. Uh, we tested 46 students in grades K through 12. Uh, one student was not tested, which is a 97.8% participation rate, uh, which is actually is important because it's part of the accountability formula for the state. In, uh, January, February, this is how many students we tested at the elementary level. So you can see the breakdown. That's our student population this year. Uh, this is our middle school participation. And high school. All right, so what does ACCESS mean with all of the stuff I just said? All right. So when students, uh, join East Hampton Public Schools, um, we, if they have any language other than English on what's called the Home Language Survey, we screen them for services provided by the English learner department. Um, if they meet the criteria to join the English learner department, then we, we take them in, and then the state requires us to test them on the ACCESS test, um, every year. Students are tested in four domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. So then they join the English learner department, and depending on what level of English they had coming in, um, they may have one to six years of, um, expected, um, you know, attendance in the English learner department or program. So in order to then exit, they have to achieve a 4.2 overall score and a 3.9 literacy score on ACCESS. And then if you want to look at those categories, that's how it's all broken down in terms of determining those scores for exiting the program. Uh, this year, five students at Mountain View School received qualifying exit scores on ACCESS, and three students at EHS received qualifying exit scores on ACCESS. So that's really exciting. Um, eight students received scores that they could exit, uh, they exit the program. And the language acquisition team, which is a combined group of ESL teachers, administrators, EL program coordinators, and then, um, uh, feedback from general education teachers, um, met last week. Oh my gosh, I made this slideshow before I, uh, got sick and couldn't present to you. So this is now like four weeks ago. Uh, to determine that six of the eight total students had met all criteria for being reclassified as former English learners, and then we're still collecting data on two more students. What I don't have is growth percentile data, which is how students, um, grow, how much they grow each year. Um, that'll come when we get our MCAS data as well, um, and then that'll be part of the bigger data presentation in the fall. So the guidance for ESL instruction and levels based on access scores is that if a student scores the foundational level, they should receive at least two to three periods of at least 45 minutes of instruction per day by a licensed ESL teacher in direct instruction. If they're at the traditional transitional level, um, then they receive one period a day, which is 45 minutes, no less than 45 minutes of ESL instruction delivered by a licensed ESL teacher. So the school day is six hours and 15 minutes long. And it's our, you know, as, as administrators and, um, as we're implementing the contract, we're always thinking about how much instruction teachers are available for during the day and when we need to give them collaboration time, lunchtime, prep time, et cetera. So according to the contract, educators could be available for instruction with students for most five hours and 15 minutes daily. Um, and these are collectively bargained expectations. So for elementary, one thing we've done this year is we have, we used to have a K-4 model for the ESL instruction. This year, we went to a K-5 model. Um, it was too many students, um, so now we're going back to a K-4 model. So far, we're, we were, we are sure we have two students in the incoming kindergarten, but I've actually counted, uh, three in the total here because I expect that we will have one more. Um, but that's my like little prediction. Uh, so for the ESL teacher, um, from kindergarten to fourth grade, there would be six students at the foundational level, eight students at the transitional level, which is, which is 17 students total. Again, if we get more case students, um, this is a possibility where, like in special ed, if you get students that you don't have staff for, um, that's when we would have made the decision to, for example, which of course has already happened, um, reassign the, a paraeducator back to the ESL, um, program. So we have lots of programs that need paraeducators right now. We haven't done the assigning of paraeducators for next school year. Um, but we will certainly now, especially as students move, uh, into the district, reassign that paraeducator to the elementary ESL program. So that's a total of five hours and 15 minutes of suggested daily minutes of instruction. So the, at the middle school, so we've got that change in grade levels, fifth grade to eighth grade, um, with again, additional enrollment pending. And we have, um, two students who are in sub-separate programs, um, for students with disabilities. We have one student speaking at a foundational level, 11 students at the transitional level, for a total of 14 students. Because that only, um, goes up to three hours and 45 minutes approximately of instruction, we may choose to have that teacher also take on some of the fourth grade students and, and provide instruction to fourth grade as well. The benefit of not being in three separate elementary schools and a separate middle school, um, is profound. And so let's take a moment to just feel really good about the building project and how we are able to pool our resources to serve all of our students in a much, much more effective way. Um, so our high school caseload next year, uh, will be one student at the foundational level and six students at the transitional level for a total of seven students. And the suggested daily minutes of instruction for those students is 90 minutes. So that, that's one, um, class period with a little extra, um, in the EHS schedule, daily schedule. There are some additional duties of ESL teachers, which I, or I'm sorry, EL teachers, which I, um, want to draw some, some spotlights onto because of course these are very important. Um, so when students exit, uh, due to their access scores, um, they are not just dropped and left to, um, fend for themselves. We monitor them, um, on a quarterly basis, and that's in collaboration with their general education teachers. And if a student, if, if there's more concern for a student, we do that on a monthly basis. Uh, the teachers engage with families, often encourage partnerships in students' education and participation in school events. Um, we really, the, the teachers are excellent at engaging, uh, with families. In collaboration with the family engagement coordinator and family diversity liaison, they connect with, they connect families with community service partners. They support students in communication with general education teachers, special education teachers and administrators. Accessing translation and interpretation is obviously a big piece of that, so, um, everyone is responsible for that. And certainly the EL teachers support teachers in accessing those tools. Um, there's also additional supports that I can't quantify, um, for students and families. And really what I want to explain is that all of these duties are also required of the classroom teachers, the special education teachers, the counselors, and the related service providers, all of whom who also serve this population, our, our English learner students. So this is not about really one department. This is about how we're going to build a whole circle of people around families who need more support. Um, and I, and I want to say that our East Hampton educators are particularly skilled in doing that, and, um, I'm really excited for how great our programming is, how far it's come, and that we've actually been able to increase the licensed, um, teachers by a third since pre-COVID. So this is exciting, and I'm gonna stop sharing. I have to go back to this tab. Um, so I want to be really proud of this program. I want to be proud of the students and the families. I want that to come first. Um, and then I want to also recognize that maybe there was a better path, um, in the budget process towards getting, um, more robust programming for this population.
Sarah? Sarah, you have to unmute.
Sorry about that. I, I un, the lower hand instead of the mute. Um, do you, I, I'm so sorry for asking about this in a public forum. Do you go by Julie or Julianne generally? How do you?
Oh, Julianne. Thank you for asking. I'm so sorry you introduced myself. I am Julianne. Yes.
I'm sure you did, but I don't, I didn't write it down. I wrote down everything else. Um, so I just wanted to say first, it was great. It's great working with you again, first of all. I really enjoyed the first time around when I was on the committee, and you were new as well. I was always really impressed, um, with your presentations, and you didn't have to share them on Google Meet at that point, so I didn't even know that that was an issue. Um, you, you clearly like know what you're talking about, and you have kind of like a firm grip on all, on all of our programs, which I think is super cool. Um, so as always, I really enjoyed your presentation. I guess I just had a couple of questions, a couple. So first of all, I guess for people who don't know me as well, I feel like I'm starting every sentence with that. My wife is actually an ELL teacher, so, uh, in Westfield, so, um, and she does, she does mostly, um, mostly, uh, um, newer arrivals to, uh, so, yeah, so, um, I've, I've sort of know a little bit from like dinner conversations about, um, EL, uh, law and kind of procedures in our state. Um, so I just have a question. I was looking at those numbers, and so do we generally, my understanding is that such, like, every community has kind of a different culture around their EL program. And in some communities, you see a lot of kids coming in and then leaving. Like they come to the district for a couple of years, and then they move somewhere else with their family. And then in some communities, you have families who move and they stay in the community longer term. And so I was just looking at those numbers of kids moving out of foundational and into transitional, and I was just wondering if it seems like there's more kids in transitional who are older, and there's fewer EL kids who are older, which makes me think they're probably staying in district, and I wanted to know if that was the case.
That's the case. Yes.
That's really good. That's actually like a really good sign.
I agree.
Thinking about was like the cost of housing in East Hampton as well, and how difficult it can be for families to move here. And so I was thinking like, for people who really want to support the EL community in, in our town, you know, there's, there's other things that we can look at, well, uh, aside from just school, and one of the things I was wondering about was housing. But I'm glad to hear that they're mostly staying in district. Um, and the other, the other question I had, and I, I, so DESI, as you know, just put out a, uh, they started these EL PACs, or they said that we're also to be starting these EL PACs.
Yeah.
And some districts have, are more active than others, and I was just wondering kind of what the state of our EL PAC is.
Sure.
Can I support you better in supporting them?
Um, so we, we've talked about it for years, so that the, uh, state guideline is that you don't have to, you don't have to start one, I'm putting that in quotes, um, until you reach 5% of your population. Um, and I think we're at, wait, let me just check, uh, 2.7%. So, um,
Oh, and for those of you who don't know, PAC stands for Parent Advisory Committee. This would be like, kind of like a CPAC, kind of like a special education parent advisory committee, but for the English, English language community. I'm so sorry. I talk in acronyms all day.
No, thank you so much, Sarah. I, I am also one who is guilty of talking in acronyms, so everyone should interrupt me when I do that. Um, so yes, so we, we have, um, we, we're not at the threshold where it would be required, but, um, we've talked about it endlessly, and pre-COVID, um, we had, there was like a, a group of families that would get together, so like there, there were, um, more opportunities, I think. Um, as with many things that we haven't picked back up after COVID.
Yeah.
That would be one of them. Um, so yes, I would, I would be thrilled to start an LPAC, um, in East Hampton. Um, I think that that would bring a lot of value.
Yeah. That's another thing, if people are looking for ways to connect with and support that community, if you have space that you can offer for meetings, or if you have a local business and you want to donate some coffee or whatever, or, you know, just like want to, you know, be, because, because I think one of the things that can be hard for that population is the parents, you know, uh, sometimes have their own kind of English language needs and have to be communicating with the district, or maybe they come from a culture where you don't, you don't kind of advocate as much with authority figures. So I think anything that we can do as a community to, to be very welcoming to those folks among us in particular, and that could mean say, like, you know, uh, people maybe getting in touch with you and saying, hey, if you know any English language parents, we'd really like to invite them to this thing that's happening at our church, or we'd like to invite them to this block party, or, you know, whatever we're working on. So I think it's good. Like, I'm glad that the community is engaged as always, and that's one of the good things about East Hampton. And one of the things I love about it is everybody's just got so much heart. But I do, um, I, 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 I've, I think that there's other ways to engage as well, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Sarah, and I, I want to mention that, um, Jeanne Libby works closely with, um, as the family and quote, community engagement liaison. She works closely with, um, lots of different families of parents. Um, but she would be, um, an awesome person. Me and her would be an awesome team. Um, for anyone who's interested in, yeah, supporting EL families, starting an LPAC, we are, we are your people.
That's awesome. That's really good to hear.
Okay, thank you.
So Julianne and Dr. Leclerc, can you share that presentation, that slide presentation with the school committee?
Absolutely. I'm so sorry that I haven't already.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Can you share it with the city council? Uh, it would be good for them to read that, I think.
I would leave that up to the school committee chair to, once I share with her, she can do with it as she wants.
Go to my head, sure. You're Lashy pal.
Um, I, I just feel like I, I need to, to speak a little bit. Uh, Julianne and Dr. Leclerc, um, the, the presentation around the data and access and we, um, was excellent, and the district should be commended by getting those scores up. I actually by accident had a great conversation with Commissioner Riley about that the day he came out, um, for We the People, and we were talking about access scores. Um, on the other hand, I also just need to speak to, um, you know, I almost didn't speak because I, I just don't want to make feelings harder or whatnot, but, but the the conversation around the budget and the pot of money that might be available or whatnot, I thought was very inappropriate. Um, I thought that the information from, especially given what, you know, again, it's not supposed to be school versus city, and city from the beginning of CARES Act has, has really put, look, I've taken my lumps for giving school what I've given them, and I, and I, and it's seen as a personal thing that I'm, am doing that, and I feel it's the values of the community. But I am a little concerned about that language. Also, um, the right of a FOIA, it's always okay to do a FOIA, um, and to say they had to do it through a FOIA, or why didn't they come and talk? I think we should be thinking about that. Um, I had parents as well as teachers, um, come and say they wanted to share information and were told they couldn't. All rumors, but my guess, my question would be, if you don't want or were surprised people came to the school committee or this, in the city council, I just hope internally, there's a conversation with those teachers to say, not don't do that again, but what's going on? Because there was definitely a divide, um, between that. So and, and I, you know, lastly, maybe I should have said first, I don't direct, no more than I take the lumps of, of where the budget goes. I'm, I'm not at all putting this directly on, on you, Julianne, or, uh, Superintendent Leclerc. And, and again, the, the data across the board for not just this, this assessment, but multiple assessments, um, including the fifth grade. Um, it, it's really something to be, it's, it's a strength of the district and of your leadership, so, um, thank you for the opportunity to, to say something.
Anybody else? All right, it doesn't look like anybody else, so thank you. Thank you for that. And thank you for sending that to us. That's important information. So now we have.
That's all I have for tonight. I'm done.
Is, is Nick here?
Nick is here.
There you are. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Let me start just by formally introducing myself to our two new committee members. I'm Nick Burnier. I'm the Director of Business Services here in East Hampton. My understanding is both of you have served on the committee before, so you likely worked with my predecessor Dale, who retired at the end of last year. So I'm just, I'm finishing up my first year in the district. So far, so, so good. It's, it's been a really good experience working here. We have a great leadership team and, you know, I, I value the process that, that we have, you know, gone through to develop our, our budget with not only the leadership team, but also our, our school committee. And I also value the relationships that I've, I've formed with city officials along the way as well. I think we've done a lot of good work so far since, since last July. And, you know, I look forward to continuing that as well as working with both of you. That being said, I'll get to my monthly business report. At this time, 85.77% of our appropriation has been expended. And an additional 3.58% is encumbered. As we approach the end of the year here, I'm currently preparing for the year end close. Non-emergency purchasing has been frozen. There's still several invoices that need to be paid, as well as some that need to be received. We're chasing down some vendors for, for some invoices, as well as our, our final FY23 payrolls and summer pay encumbrances. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts still to occur prior to the, the year end close, but we're rapidly approaching that. Number two, the school security earmark there, the $40,000 earmark that we received from the state this year for East Hampton High School security upgrades is nearly expended. Some cameras are in the process of being installed in the parking lot. And some individual camera units for inside of the building have been purchased. So we will have them for when we're ready to complete the camera upgrade project. I'm currently working with representatives from Motorola to find additional grant funding sources so we can complete it. Grant was applied for about a year ago, which the district did not get. So the project is likely going to be done more piecemeal than originally intended. However, I do have a meeting coming up with some school grant specialists who are affiliated with Motorola, who have access to, you know, probably more grant funding opportunities than what we could find on the Desi website, or, or, you know, even federal websites. So we're looking forward to getting this project completed. I would think probably in about two years, unless, you know, there's a really good grant available, then that would be decreased to one year. Number three, our summer food service program is gonna be up and running. We got the approval from Desi last Thursday. So from July 5th to August 18th, meals will be available for all interested children up to age 18. The program will run out of two sites. One is a closed site at Neary School, which really won't involve the rest of the community at all. But the one that does will be at Millside Park. Meals will be available five days per week. They do have to be consumed onsite though, which is different than the grab and go model that occurred during the darkest days of the pandemic. That's a USDA rule. There's nothing we can do about that, but we did receive a grant in the amount of $3,000 from Project Bread to help us run the program. We're currently awaiting our marketing materials. I did contact our food service director today, who said he's got some. He's got like a few banners that he's going to be able to put in different places in the community. He's awaiting materials that we can send home with students as well. Because marketing is going to be huge. You know, just because we didn't, you know, I don't believe historically before the pandemic, we did this. And I know we certainly didn't do it last summer. So getting the word out is going to be, going to be massive, that, that this will be available. No signups required, no IDs. You know, if families are watching nieces and nephews, they can bring them to Millside Park to get a, a meal during the, when the program runs. So the next step will be really getting the word out there. As I said, the application's been completed and approved. The next steps will be marketing and I have to attend a training tomorrow with our food service director because we're considered a first time site. And because of that, they audit us twice during the, the course of the program, just to make sure that we're following all the rules and really concentrating on food safety, which, you know, as you can imagine, if you're bringing meals from a, a site, they'll be cooked at the high school and then transported to Millside Park. There's, you know, there's food safety, you know, concerns that could come into play if they're not properly transported and, and things like that. So all that's covered in the training, the staff, cafeteria staff will, will receive training as well. So we can make sure that we, we meet all the requirements and feed all of our interested families safely. The meals will be transported each day using the, one of the vans that the city owns. I'm very thankful for that. It's, it's certainly going to make things easier, you know, just making the program run efficiently. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. I know Ken LaPage, our food service director is as well. I've included a flyer that Ken created in the backup documents I, I gave. City council has also received that. They asked for it so they can get word out to, to people in the community. Jean Libby will put it in our website as well. She's in the process of translating it. So the wheels are in motion. We're looking forward to it. And, you know, we're, we're pretty much ready to go there. Does anybody have any questions before I move on to the personnel report?
No. Oh, the mayor does, but I just, let me just say, I'm always excited to see that summer lunch program. I really am. So it's nice that it can continue. Mayor?
I, I was just, Nick, are they going to post a menu or where a menu would be like posted for like the summer of what students would be able to expect? Might help with marketing if they know the, the type of food, or is it the same menu every day?
I believe that it does differ from day to day. I will touch base with Ken tomorrow to ask about the menus. I, I'm certain they would publish them in advance because, you know, families are going to want to know what's available. So, but I, I will, I will get a definitive answer on that. I can certainly email the, the committee and, and share that information. And then there was one other thing I left at the site will only be closed if there's severe weather. There is a tent for, you know, drizzle and, you know, light rain and things like that. That wouldn't close the site. But if there's thunder and lightning, obviously we can't have people come into the park to, to receive their meal.
So Laura did message us. Her question is, can you describe onsite consumption more? It seems like it will limit ability to access. And so I, I can see the vision that you have, you know, the capacity under this tent. But you're telling everybody they have to eat on site. What is the maximum that you'll be able to, that's what I'm assuming, what is the maximum you'll be able to serve at a time?
I mean, my understanding is if the meals are going to be consumed onsite, they just have to be eaten somewhere in the park, not necessarily under the tent. So, you know, families can, you know, bring a blanket and sit under a tree. They can, you know, it's, I, I don't believe that, you know, the size of the park is going to limit the ability to, to serve the, the meals in any way, shape or form. You know, we made a budget based on what, you know, Ken believes will probably serve upwards of 50, maybe a little more meals per day. But we, we really have no idea. I mean, during the pandemic, I'm certain we served more than that. Because they were grab and go and you can grab them, you know, for several days. You know, having to eat them onsite, even though it's in a park, is, you know, somewhat restrictive, but that there's, we don't have another option because none of our other schools qualified to be a, a site, which may be where community member Scott was going with that question, you know? Some folks may wonder why this isn't being done at a school. And the reason why would be because we just, none of our schools qualified to be a site based on our free and reduced lunch percentage.
So the mayor has a question, but I just want to ask one quickly. So you talked about sitting on blankets. Can we put that in kind of the messaging to people? That, you know, you don't have to be sitting at a table. You can come and make a picnic style. Just so that, you know, I wouldn't want families to show up, see everybody seated at a table and think, oh, I can't do it now. I've got to come back.
I, I can ask Ken to include that in the materials that, you know, end up getting distributed to students.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Oh, you're muted.
During severe weather or just different notifications about the, the lunch program, will school messenger or the notification, like how will people know? Will the usual school notification tools be used for summer lunch?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if that stopped in the summer.
Yeah, I believe Ken has the capability of doing that because he typed up a robocall blurb for me to review. You know, so he's planning on sending one out to advertise the program. So yeah, we'll, we'll get out the word if it's going to be canceled.
Thank you, Sarah.
Um, if there are students who are participating in extended school year or summer school services at either of the schools, are they going to be able to access the lunch at school or are they going to have to go to the park? I just, I don't know exactly how the timing is going to work.
They would have to go to the park, but the meals are served until I believe, what, 12:30?
I think our programs go until like 11, 11:30. So I could see it being tight, but, but working.
Yeah, we factored that in when we, you know, kind of landed on the times. You know, if we were to do a closed site just for like, say, the summer program at Mountain View, only students in that program would be able to access the meals.
Right.
And, you know, we wanted to do something for the larger community.
Okay.
So that's in, and, you know, speaking to Wyatt's at Mill, Millside Park. It's because most people probably don't realize, but Neary School, the, the private special education school is part of our national school lunch program, which means that I apply, you know, on behalf of them every year. Our contracted food service provider, you know, manages that. And, you know, the meals are cooked there for the, the students who attend school there. But they're also a CEP school, which means that, you know, community eligibility provision, their percentage of free and reduced lunch students meet the threshold where meals are free for all students there. And would be even if meals weren't universally free for students in other schools this year. But based on USDA rules, there's like, there's a radius of where you can have a site within, you know, a certain, I think it's like a mile and a half or maybe two miles maximum from that school. And Millside Park was just on the outside of it. So we figured it was a place that, you know, folks in the community are familiar with and, you know, might be likely to go to in the summer. And it met the criteria of being close enough to Neary. So that's why we landed on that site. Every year I do have to do two reports for Desi's food service requirements, where we look at our free and reduced lunch percentages. And, and Mountain View is pretty close to getting there, like we're within like percent. So a year from now, we could be having a different conversation.
Okay. And that would, that makes sense. I'm thinking historically, and I know that things were kind of upside down during the pandemic. But I remember Maple was a, was a free and reduce. They had a high enough numbers to be a distribution site. So. Cool. Thank you. Appreciate them.
Absolutely.
If you get somebody to do some live music on some of those days, like really get everybody to come out.
So Laura has one more question. If families bring containers, are they allowed to bring food or uneaten portions home? Or are they required to throw away anything that they don't consume on site?
That is a very good question that I am going to have to do a little bit of research on and get back to the committee. I mean, I, I couldn't send a full, full uneaten meal home because in order for it to be a qualified reimbursable meal, it has to be, as I said, consumed on site. However, I mean, I mean, you know, I can't envision a, a world where somebody's going to stand there and say, nope, put that in the trash. Before you, I mean, why would you do that? It's a huge waste of food. That doesn't help anybody. You know, I, I would have to, as I said, do a little bit of research on like the, the letter of the summer food service program law. But I, I can certainly, you know, respond to the, the committee once I, you know, physically read something that will address that question.
I have, Holly Oak has been doing this for a long time and, and they do it in the park by the children's museum, as well as a few other sites. And I know that I've taken my kid to the museum during the summer and they've basically just handed us a tray of food. And nobody's ever like, told us we couldn't leave the park with it. You know, it was just, it was just, it's just like a school lunch with like a milk carton and everything. And, you know, he would eat what he wanted and then we would toss everything else. So I, I haven't, I don't know. It might be worth reaching out to a couple other districts that have done this prior to COVID to just see what, what has worked in other communities.
Our food service director's done this in another district as well.
Oh, good. Perfect.
Oh, hell, hell no.
Yeah.
I think that's it for questions.
All right. So now I'll move on to my personnel report. As you can see, it's in, you know, the packet that I, the documents that I've given you. Not much to report this month. Very slow personnel month, which May typically tends to be. I mean, you're not going to have a lot of new hires in, you know, in, in May and, you know, you're, anybody who's resigning or retiring at the end of the year will show up on the June personnel report. So really the only things here are, are two transfers. We, we had an administrative assistant in our special ed office moved from a 0.57 FTE to a 1.0. And then we had somebody that was an admin assistant, formerly an admin assistant in our special ed office, moved to Mountain View for about a month to cover a vacancy until a permanent individual was hired. So that, that's all the personnel action for last month. Current vacancies, I did not include anything that's currently posted because, you know, there's a process of these, these positions being posted internally and, and, you know, sometimes transfers occur internally and new things become, you know, needed to be posted before, you know, everything's filled. So I only include, included our current vacancies, which would just be a pair of educator at both the high school and Mountain View, as well as a special ed teacher at East Hampton High School. You know, any currently posted anticipated vacancies, you know, can be spoken to later in the summer if something hasn't been filled. You know, I know principals and directors are in the process of, of working on that now.
Okay, it says, end of the year transfers, vote needed?
Yeah. I, you know, as you know, the year end closes approaching and, and, you know, in doing that, you know, and, and long story short, a lot of money gets moved around. I mean, you'll find accounts that are in deficit. You'll find some that have been underspent. And, you know, in the end, we've got to end up zeroing everything out, which often means transferring large sums of money, you know? I, I, I think last summer, my assistant business manager did probably 90 transfers before the year and the year was actually closed. But school committee policy states that anything 5,000 or above needs to be approved by the school committee, which, you know, in, in to end of the year transfers, you'd never be able to close the year on time because we don't have a meeting until July 18th. So I, I guess I'm coming to the committee to see if this is even necessary, but in my former district, I would ask for permission to transfer sums above their threshold for the purpose and only the purpose of closing the year. You know, but it would require a vote in my prior district. So I'm just, I guess, coming to the committee to see if it's necessary for me to ask you to do that. So I'm just, I guess, coming to the committee to see if it's necessary for me to ask you to do that or to be able to do that rather.
Mayor, what are your thoughts? I, from my perspective, I don't think Dale ever, um, I think she just did it at the end of the year. Um, and then let us know what got transferred.
Which more or less, when I came in, you know, I, I did it with the assumption that she probably had permission to do it. I know I reported everything to the finance subcommittee back in August when we met for the first time.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I would agree. I think it's more about notification and not, uh, approval to do that. I think that's within your purview to go ahead and make those necessary transfers and then just let us know.
Okay, that's fine.
Questions about any of that, that I certainly think, you know, and you'd like additional feedback, then certainly bringing it to us. But, but the mayor may have a different opinion.
I mean, uh, you know, as I said, I only asked because the policy states five thousand. I mean, really what it is, is, you know, um, say, middle school, special ed teachers, the account was, you know, six thousand dollars in deficit. But then Mountain View Elementary Regular Ed Teachers was underspent by fourteen thousand. I would then move six thousand to the special ed account. So that's zero, you know what I mean? It's just, it's just to get us to, you know, where we need to be so we can zero out.
Mayor?
Um, I know on the city side, uh, the auditors, our third party auditors, um, have an amount, I, I believe it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If there are things that need to be moved around, um, and it's under one fifty, then it's notification and not vote. Uh, and I, I don't know, I, I'm more bringing up, I'm not sure with the single audit on the schools, if the auditor give that suggestion or not. I, I can go either, I, I have no preference. I totally defer to, to the chair and the finance subcommittee. But I, I know that the auditors for the city have given us an amount, um, that we transfer around before we actually need a vote because it happens so fast at the end of the year. They'd rather us do it before June thirtieth instead of exactly as you described it in, in August. So I don't know with, I, I, city side, we do up to a hundred and fifty and then notifies, um, city council.
Is that between departments or within departments?
Uh, both.
So how much are you envisioning that you're going to be moving around and closing out?
I mean, I don't see any individual amount being a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I, I mean, you know, but last year, a lot of it was, you know, there's twenty five bucks left here. I'm going to put it in this account that has a deficit, you know? There's thirty two fifty here, I'm going to move it, you know? Uh, ba- basically what you do is you find your account with the largest deficit and you start, you know, moving accounts that are underspent to that.
Okay, Sarah?
I'm going to unmute. I am, uh, in favor of you doing the job that we're paying you to do without having to, um, get our permission for every little step. Uh, one thing that I was thinking is you said you were eighty seven point five percent spent. Is that correct?
Yeah, about that, yeah.
About like three and a half percent encumbered on top of that.
Yeah.
So we have about, between encumbrances and between what's been spent, we have about ninety percent spent. So, which is pretty much exactly where we need to be right now. Um, so what I was thinking is, does it, does it make sense? I have a feeling that this five hundred dollars might have been like, um, well, it's a five hundred, it's currently written as like, do you need permission for over five hundred dollars to move, right? Is that what you said? Five thousand, okay. Regardless of where the decimal point is, um, I feel like that's probably five thousand dollars in, um, money from decades ago and I would be fine with a higher amount. No, you don't think so, Mayor? What is, where's that from?
No, that's pretty standard, actually, five thousand in terms of, uh, a limit on that kind of thing. But I do think that there is a different status here in terms of the end of the year.
About just doing a percentage of the total budget.
Yeah, I, I think that the five thousand is a pretty standard amount. We'd have to change our policy if we wanted to go back and revisit that. I think that, but I think that there is, uh, at the end of the year, there is these minor adjustments that need to be happening. So I, I, I think, I think, like, we're all still agreeing, go ahead and go ahead and do those.
I think we're all agreeing. I just, I was just thinking, that just seems like such a small amount of money to, to vote on. You know what I mean? So anyway, I was thinking about, I, I don't know if, how necessary it is and I, you know, I've, um, it's been a while since I've compared our policy with other school districts. I don't know how, I don't know, I guess, how necessary or standard this particular practice is. So I don't know for now, if we can come up with a way to move forward and then the policy subcommittee can look at this in the next year and come up with something a little bit longer term.
I mean, it happens in every district, the, the closeout has to occur. Transfers have to happen in order to do it. And, you know, some school committees, you know, want to, to vote on and giving permission to do so. Others don't. I just wanted to, to make sure I asked you prior to me starting my close.
Okay, so, um, let's make a decision because my, my experience with this is that you make those changes and then you report out to the finance subcommittee, what, what has been done. Mayor, does that make sense?
Correct, yep. That's why, that's exactly what your experience was, like, meeting with us last August. And that'll happen again and, you know.
So I think that's comfortable. I think that's, that's the way we should leave that.
Again, just in terms of the public, I just want to be really clear. It's not like this, this is all money that's already been approved to be spent and it's just suddenly becoming that one line has been, you know, has overspent and one line is underspent. And so you balance that and that balancing the budget is a critical part of the end of year. So it, it's not like we're suddenly giving you any sort of carte blanche to spend money that hasn't been approved. I just want to be really clear, uh, on that. But I, so I think that you are approved to be able to go forward and proceed. And then you'll be reporting back to us how those adjustments were made, um, as part of the end of year, uh, review and, and of you. And then also the audit that you go through for the end of the year as well, we'll also, we'll be looking at that as well. So those are all steps that are taken to make sure that, you know, nothing dubious is done. And we feel like you're totally empowered to be able to make those necessary adjustments to balance the budget.
Right, then, thank you. And, you know, thank you for your explanation, uh, for the public as well. I, I think, um, describing it as, as balancing the budget is, is a good way to do it. You know, because at the end of the year, your spending does not mirror exactly what the budget was when it was past the prior year. And, you know, we just got to move a little bit of money around to get it where we need to, to close. So thank you.
It would be a miracle if the budget that was drafted in February of twenty two was the exact spend amounts that you had in June of twenty twenty three. So it.
I wouldn't believe it. I would think there must have been crooked going on if that's the case, so.
Yeah, I will always make it my goal.
All right, thank you. Mayor, do we have a finance subcommittee report?
Uh, the only report that we have is that we did meet with city council, as this has been mentioned several times, with several, several of the city council members to discuss, um, our budget in advance of the city council vote. Um, and then Megan and myself also presented at city council, um, seeking to, uh, have approval for our eighteen million plus budget with city funding. And that was approved and so that we can proceed. We are continuing as part of that conversation to look at the English learner learner program and have an additional, uh, program conversation scheduled for July thirty first, um, in addition to the information and data that was provided tonight by, um, Julian Levin. And so we'll be able to move forward together, um, and look forward to that conversation, really sort of making sure that we all do have a common vision and common, uh, understanding of what our ELL program is and how we best support these, uh, learners in our district. So I, I'm feeling really positive that we're headed in the right direction and we'll continue to do that in our July thirty first meeting.
Great. Um, so we don't have a policy subcommittee right now. And the reason is because we just have Ben. So it would be, um, nice tonight if we could, um, uh, if Ben wanted to make a motion to have two, our two new school committee members, take on policy. But one way or another, we need to, um, hopefully get a policy subcommittee going.
Do the two new members want to do that? Is that, did they have a choice?
No.
Do we have a choice in anything?
They have joined to serve. We need to serve on policy.
Be on the policy subcommittee. I have no problem with that.
Yeah. Well, then I, I, I'll make a motion to have Sarah Hunter and Laura Scott, uh, become part of the policy committee.
I'll second that.
All right, so let's vote for that so we can actually have a policy subcommittee. Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Mayor?
Mayor Goldstein, yes.
Sarah?
Sarah Hunter, yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laura, can you type in yes or yay? Thank you, nice job, you're really fast. And Cindy Kuzinski, yes. So great, we have a policy subcommittee. And I just want to say, um, thank you to Laura and to Sarah. We, we, you knew what you were getting into when you jumped into this, but you really jumped into this because we went right from, you know, getting elected to, um, absolutely doing interviews. And now we're throwing policy at you. So I want to thank, thank you both for, for all of that. Is there any?
I want to join school committee if I didn't think people would be throwing policy at me. I mean, that's kind of the point of the committee, so.
Oh, that's good. Do we have another? Because otherwise, um, I'm going to read the action items and, um, we will start making motions to move into executive session. Do we have another? Nope, okay, all right. So, um, Megan usually does this, but now I will do that. And, um, hopefully we will, um, run through this pretty quickly. I move to approve the school payroll dated five eighteen twenty twenty three in the amount of six hundred and twenty three thousand, one hundred eighty eight dollars and forty seven cents.
I second that.
Mayor?
Mayor, yes.
Mayor Goldstein, yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laura? Yes, thank you. Laura has typed in yes and Cindy Kuzinski, yes. I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated five eighteen twenty twenty three in the amount of three hundred and seventy six thousand, four hundred and thirty six dollars and seventy two cents.
I second that.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, yes.
Mayor Goldstein, yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laura? Laura has typed yes and Cindy Kuzinski, yes. Move to accept the minutes of the joint convention between city council and the school committee on May tenth, twenty twenty three.
Um, can I ask a procedural question on that? Since I was not a member of the committee, I abstain from this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
I second that.
Okay, Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Mayor?
Mayor Goldstein, yes.
Ben?
Uh, Ben Hershey, yes.
And Cindy Kuzinski, yes. So we have a quorum for that. Move to accept the joint convention between city council and school committee on May eighteenth, twenty twenty three.
Cindy, just, uh, Laura Scott also wrote in that she abstains as well on that vote.
Thank you for that catch. I didn't even call out your name. Thank you, Laura. Okay, great.
So I second that motion for the eighteenth.
Yeah. All right. Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Mayor Goldstein, yes.
Ben, yes.
Sarah?
Abstain.
And Laura abstains and Cindy Kuzinski, yes. I move to approve and accept the minutes of the joint convention between city council and school committee on May thirty first, twenty twenty three.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Mayor Goldstein, yes.
Oh, sorry.
Sarah?
Abstain.
Okay, Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laura? Abstain and Cindy Kuzinski, uh, yes, I almost abstained. I move to approve the minutes of the May eighth, twenty twenty three, school committee work session.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Mayor Goldstein, yes.
Sarah?
Abstain.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
And Laura abstained and Cindy Kuzinski, yes. Move to approve the minutes of May sixteenth, twenty twenty three, school committee work session.
Second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Mayor Goldstein, yes.
Sarah?
Abstain.
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laura?
Abstains.
Okay. And Cindy Kuzinski, yes. Move to approve the school payroll dated six, one, twenty twenty three in the amount of five hundred and eighty seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy three dollars and two cents.
I second that.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Mayor Goldstein, yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laura, yes, thank you. And Cindy Kuzinski, yes. All right, move to approve the out of state trip request for EHS to France, April tenth through the eighteen, twenty twenty four. And your camera's back on, Dr. Luclear?
Um, you can remove that one, you've already approved it in the fall. But you did miss, I think you missed J, I. Did you have I?
Yeah, I did miss that.
Okay, delete, delete, Jay, you've already approved it.
Good catch, good catch. Okay, I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated six, one, twenty twenty three in the amount of one hundred and thirty seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty six dollars, nineteen cents.
I second that.
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Mayor Goldstein, yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
And Laura Scott, yes. And Cindy Kuzinski, yes. Okay, our next meeting date, um, I am aware that there might be a conflict for the July eighteenth meeting, but, um, that is to be determined. Um, and we will find that out pretty quickly and, um, get that information out. Other than that, we have a July thirty first, which will be the ELL presentation, August twenty second and September twelfth. And then, of course, there's a long line, October tenth, twenty fourth, November fourteenth and December twelfth. So now, um, we need to, um, roll call into executive session. We will be adjourning from, Laura says I'm going to log into the call from my phone for executive session in the hopes of having functioning audio. That's a great idea, but wait until you roll call, um, into executive session, please. So I'm going to read this. We're having an executive session pursuant to MGL thirty A, twenty one, A three to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And pursuant to MGL thirty A, twenty one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the East Hampton Education Association, teachers, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. So we're going to roll call into an executive session. And again, we will be adjourning, we will not be returning and we will be adjourning from executive session. So Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Mayor Goldstein, yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laura, yes, and Cindy Kuzinski, yes. So good night, everybody. And, um, the rest of us will go to executive session and we'll start that as soon as we know that everybody has gone.